Good evening and welcome back to a joint meeting of the Burbank City Council with the Housing Authority and Parking Authority on Tuesday, August 26, 2025. Today's study session item is an update on the completion of the 12-month pilot of the downtown Burbank San Fernando Boulevard reconfiguration Phase One and review of the Phase Two project plan. I welcome Marcos Fuentes, Senior Transportation Planner with the Community Development Department, to please present the report. Mr. Fuentes, welcome.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Takahashi and members of the City Council. My name is Marcos Fuentes, Senior Transportation Planner with the Community Development Department. Today, I am here to provide you an update on the completion of the first 12 months of the San Fernando Boulevard reconfiguration project, as well as outlining potential steps in the next phase of the project. May I have the presentation, please? Over the past 12 months, the city implemented the first phase of the downtown San Fernando Boulevard reconfiguration project. This is a short-term priority project that was adopted as part of the citywide Complete Our Streets Plan back in 2020. The area where this project is located includes a three-block stretch of San Fernando Boulevard and the city's downtown between Olive Avenue and Magnolia Boulevard. There are two phases to this project, with Phase One being a 12-month pilot and consisting of quick-build improvements meant to enhance the safety for all modes of transportation and roadway users. For additional background, this slide contains a summarized timeline of the project. After the project's adoption, the city's complete streets plan in 2020. In 2022, staff began the design and planning process, conducted initial public outreach to inform the community about the development of the project and potential design alternatives. In early 2023, City Council approved a one-way design, and staff conducted data collection to establish a baseline for existing conditions. The project was then installed in March of 2024, marking the beginning of the 12-month pilot phase. During this period, data collection has been ongoing to provide a before-and-after comparison of the project's success, and more recently, a six-month project update was provided to Council last October. The 12-month pilot period concluded this past spring in March, when staff also conducted additional community outreach and bringing us to today, where we are now providing this pilot completion update. In addition to enhancing safety for all roadway users, this project was also designed to strengthen downtown's economic activity by making the corridor more walkable and welcoming to residents and visitors. The pilot converted San Fernando Boulevard to a one-way northbound street, introduced painted curb extensions, restriped crosswalks, installed reflective ballards, added in-street planters, and new loading and short-term parking zones. It also retained on-street parking and outdoor dining areas. To assess whether the pilot met its goals, several metrics were used to measure the project's performance. Roadway-related improvements were grounded on Caltrans' crash-reduction factors, which are design tools proven to reduce crash severity and frequency. Data for these metrics were collected before and after the project's installation, and they include the ones listed in this slide, which are: improved yield compliance for pedestrians at mid-block crosswalks, maintain low vehicular speeds, preservation of on-street parking and traffic flow, reduction of illegal parking and loading at red curbs, along with encouraging visitors and patronage of downtown businesses, and further reduce the already-low number of collisions in the project area. At the completion of the pilot, the project's evaluation demonstrated overall positive outcomes. One of the most telling changes was the improvement of yield compliance at the three-mid-block crosswalks in the project area, which went from about 50% to 80% at all three locations, with the installation of curb extensions. Vehicle speeds were already low before the project; however, they remained low throughout the corridor, hovering at about 20 miles per hour. The on-street parking inventory was preserved, and the project added four more stalls, along with two short-term parking areas. While there was minor congestion and bottlenecks during peak times following the project installation, traffic-flow operations have steadily improved through ongoing signal monitoring and adjustments, as well as drivers becoming more used to the one-way configuration. Illegal parking has been reduced, especially with the onset of paid parking in downtown earlier this year, and additional enforcement resources. In terms of economic activity, the project area saw an average of 1.3 million visitors per month during the pilot phase, and quarterly tax revenue increased by 3.7% during that same period. Lastly, the number of collisions before and after the project was similar and statistically minimal, with no significant change after installation. Before the project, meaning between January 2023 to February 2024, there was one collision, and during the pilot period, there were two collisions, with none of them involving injuries to pedestrian or bicyclists. During the six-month project update, Council directed staff to measure and analyze near-miss collisions at the busiest intersections of San Fernando Boulevard at Palm Avenue and at Magnolia Boulevard, noting that pedestrians outnumber cars in the project area during peak days and times. Council also requested that staff analyze the feasibility of a scramble crosswalk treatment or an extended lead pedestrian interval at both locations. Following this direction, staff analyzed near-miss collisions, which consisted of capturing video footage of intersection activity and using video analysis software to count the number of pedestrian vehicles moving through the two intersections in a three-day span in February. The around-the-clock monitoring capturing the paths and patterns of pedestrians and cars crossing through the intersection, and when those paths of travel came close to intersecting within 1 to 5 seconds. That's how near-misses were defined for purposes of this study. It also looked at intersection geometry, traffic signal timings, collision history, and considerations for roadway operations and trade-offs to maintain adequate traffic As reflected in this graph, the result of this analysis confirmed that pedestrians do outnumber cars during the study period. At both locations, the average number of pedestrians shown in the deep green and deep-blue bars noticeably increases throughout the weekend, and in most cases, far outnumbering the volume of vehicles shown in the lighter-colored graphs, with San Fernando and Palm having the highest numbers of pedestrians of either intersection. Furthermore, at the intersection of Palm and San Fernando, 71% of all observed near-misses involved pedestrians crossing against a red-hand signal behind a vehicle, suggesting that project improvements like turning the street to a one-way, adding curb extension, and shortening crossing distances, and maintaining slow vehicular speeds have lessened pedestrian exposure to vehicular traffic and allowed pedestrians to cross the street regardless of signal phase. Staff investigated a scramble crosswalk at this location, like the one seen at the bottom-left of this slide, and found that this type of crosswalk are generally not installed at T-intersections like the one at Palm and San Fernando. It would also require new traffic signal equipment, striping, and signal timing adjustments that would result in meaningful trade-offs, but especially longer wait times for both pedestrian and vehicles, which could worsen overall corridor operations for cars and pedestrians. However, staff plans to further explore solutions to improve interactions at this location. At Magnolia and San Fernando, 55% of near-misses occurred while pedestrians had the walk signal, indicating more interactions between cars and pedestrians. Staff studied both a scramble crosswalk and an all-pedestrian phase at this location, but similar to Palm, neither treatment is recommended, as it would require additional capital costs like additional signal equipment and striping. Also, similar to Palm, adjustments to signal timing would be necessary that could result in operational drawbacks to the overall corridor. However, staff could explore extending the existing leading pedestrian interval from the existing 4 seconds to 7 seconds, and adding extra signage, which could be a low-cost option that could be implemented quickly and provide many of the same benefits as a scramble crosswalk, and fewer operational impacts. Community engagement has been an important part of the pilot. In July of 2024, staff conducted a survey with merchants and members of the Downtown Property Base Improvement District, or PBIT, to gather input from the downtown business community. In October 2024, a six-month project update was presented to the PBIT board, the Transportation Commission, and of course, the City Council. Then in May of 2025, staff hosted two pop-up events at the cultural market and the farmer's market, accompanied by a community survey, to further gather feedback as the pilot concluded. And while not least here, the Transportation Commission also received a similar 12-month project update last month. These are the results of the survey conducted with downtown merchants in July 2024, soon after the pilot was installed, to gather early impressions of the project. Among respondents, 54% agreed that the one-way reconfiguration has benefited downtown, and 41% felt that it helps attract more customers. 72% agreed that the level of safety is appropriate, and when asked about making the changes permanent, 69% expressed agreement or neutrality, as well as 62% reporting being satisfied or neutral with the overall changes. In May 2025, staff engaged with approximately 100 community members at the two-pop-up events at the cultural and farmer's market, and received 37 completed surveys. Of those, 61% strongly liked the project changes, and 62% strongly felt safer walking or driving in downtown. 64% reported that they visit or would like to visit downtown more often as a result of the project. 73% expressed support for making the changes permanent. In terms of respondent background, 60% reported walking or driving to the project area, and 78% indicated that they live either in downtown or elsewhere in the city. Towards the end of the pilot phase in March, the city implemented the downtown parking management strategy. Overlap energy was designed to address parking availability, congestion, and effective curb use. The implementation focused on 145 high-demand on-street spaces, using pricing to maintain 80% occupancy, encourage turnover, and reduce congestion. The system incorporates mobile payment options, kiosk, and enhanced enforcement with the goal of this program to not only being self-sufficient, but reinvesting revenue back into downtown parking infrastructure. Building on all the progress and momentum of this project, the next step would be the San Fernando Boulevard reconfiguration project Phase Two, which is identified as a medium-term priority in the city's Complete Our Streets Plan. Phase Two would take the lessons learned from the one-way pilot and make the quick-build improvements permanent through curb and gutter work, while retaining the on-street parking and reconfiguring the roadway to widened sidewalks and expand outdoor dining areas. The project could also bring enhanced landscaping, shade trees, upgraded irrigation, pedestrian-scale lighting, retractable ballards for flexible street closures, and other street improvements to create a more inviting and accessible downtown. Public input from stakeholders, including the city's PBIT, commissions, and boards, would help shape the project's priorities for elements like lighting, street furniture, trees, and access features, with City Council approving final project designs. Currently, the city has secured $1 million in state grant to begin working on the design and planning of Phase Two, though additional funding will be needed to complete the full project. Phase Two of this project has been recommended by Metro staff to the Metro Board for a grant award of $6.2 million through Metro's Active Transportation Cycle Two program, to be announced next month in September. Staff recommendation for this item, which the City Council will be asked to consider and approve this evening as part of the consent calendar under Agenda Item Number Eight, is to approve maintaining existing improvements implemented during Phase One of the San Fernando Boulevard reconfiguration project, and direct staff to initiate design of Phase Two of the project. Approval of this recommendation would allow staff to begin planning and designing Phase Two as early as winter of 2026, and assemble an interim maintenance plan to upkeep the improvements that are in place today from Phase One. Alternatively, the City Council may direct staff to remove the Phase One improvements and restore the street to its original condition. However, this would eliminate most, if not all, of the project's safety benefits and run counter to consistent community feedback supporting a more walkable downtown. In closing, maintaining Phase One improvements and initiating Phase Two will position downtown as a vibrant regional destination prepared to welcome visitors for upcoming international events like the 2026 Super Bowl, 2026 World Cup, and 2028 Olympic and Paralympic Games, while continuing to support the local community and economy. Apologies. Thank you. That concludes my presentation, and I will remain available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. All right, colleagues, any questions? Yes.
Thank you. These are all good signs, like the metrics that we're seeing. Earlier, you mentioned scrambles are typically not in T-crosswalks. That is also consistent with what I've seen in other locations, but you did mention increasing the leading crosswalk signal. You said it's currently at 7 seconds?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Anthony, for the question. So, we have a lead pedestrian interval, or LPI, at the intersection of San Fernando Magnolia. Currently, it's 4 seconds.
4 seconds.
Yeah, and so, we are looking to see if we can extend that a little bit longer.
Did you say 7 seconds would be the target?
That is one of the targets to be considered.
Okay. All right. Yeah, what I've seen downtown, I think that would help, given the folks, giving folks an extra few more seconds to get in and then out of the crosswalk before you let the cars through. I think from 4 to 7 would be fine. You mentioned 39 survey participants from the PBIT and local merchants. So, is that, those are two different groups, because the PBIT board, those are the property owners, and then the merchants are the people who have the storefront that typically rent space from the merchants. So, you went to both groups, and you got 39 total out of both groups. How many members are there on the board at the PBIT? Do we know that number offhand? Estimate? A dozen? Two dozen?
I believe it's about a dozen. I could be wrong.
Okay. So, then, over that, then we got the merchants in the area that also responded.
Yeah, and we don't, we didn't parse which of the board members responded. This is just a global total of all?
No, no, I'm sure. I'm just trying to think about how many people were available to respond, how many merchants there are, and how many people or members there are. Yeah, so like, we got 39 out of how many, right? That's what I'm asking. And then, separate from that, you talked about earlier, you had 100 interactions and 37 survey respondents from the public, and 78% of them live in downtown or elsewhere in Burbank. I would like to know the breakdown, how many of those folks are, how many of the 78 are live in downtown Burbank, and how many are coming from elsewhere in the city? Because I think that's going to let us know whether or not this is attractive to the rest of the city. If it's just catering to downtown, then that can also inform how we build, because then we know building housing downtown is going to increase that number, versus if we make it viable for everyone in the city, and we see that number increase, then we know it becomes a destination spot, right? Rather than simply catering to the hub of people that are downtown. You see what I'm saying, the difference? If we make it a hub that people come to, versus a place that is beneficial to the folks who are already there. So, I'd just like, I'd like to see those numbers. And then, lastly, and this is something I've been talking about for years, when I look at other cities and other downtown areas, and when I mention and show this map to folks who are in planning and people who look at land use, this spot, I think, is very viable for a fully pedestrian, no-cars kind of spot. I don't think we're there yet. So, this conversation we're having about the ballards, creating a space where, for a weekend, or maybe even for a week-long event, I want to be able to show the PBIT and the merchants there, when we do a quick turnaround and shut down the street from cars, and it's just pedestrian only, I want them to see what it could really look like. I need, I would prefer that it be very streamlined and look sharp. Previously, in years past, when we shut down the streets for events and whatnot, it looks a little haphazard, we've got the big barricades out. It looks temporary, right? When we do this, I want it to seem seamless. And I want that to sort of test this theory of whether or not people, when they come, will see this as a viable, walkable space. And at that point, I think those metrics, we can come back to the PBIT and to the other merchants, and show them, hey, this is a place that's ripe for a promenade-style, walkable, no-car space. Again, I don't think we're there yet, but I'd like to test that theory, because I think the easily removable ballards, the making it look nice as we do these one-off events, is going to sort of shape that narrative moving forward. That's all.
Councilmember Mullins first, and then Ms. Odi.
Thank you. Question on Slide Number Six. So, 12 months project evaluation. So, we did three-day monitoring, and that was February, I believe, of this year, 2025?
Give me a second while I bring up this slide.
Yeah, it's Slide Six, where it says 12 months project evaluation.
Yes, thank you. So, this is related to the near-miss collision analysis. We did a three-day study in February, following the council's direction.
Okay. Given that summer month, there are a lot more people are out, walking around and driving, have we done another survey recently in the summertime to see how many people are, compared to February, how many people are actually out in June or May, when the weather is hot and everybody is taking advantage of walking around, to see what near-miss we've had during that time?
So, in terms of near-miss, we've only done this one study that was in February. We made sure that it didn't align with any holidays or any other special events or condition that may affect the number of visitors. Separately from this, just for the other data collection studies that we did for this project, we did collect data during periods in May, and then before the project, we also collected it outside of the wintertime. So, we do have snapshots in time in different periods of the year.
Okay, because that's important. There's, you know, in the winter, you don't have as many people walking, especially if it's a little bit more chilly. I know we live in California, but, you know, some days are colder than others, so I want to make sure that we actually have right numbers that represent, you know, how busy the downtown area is on some days versus another. The other question I had, and it's regarding to the survey, on Survey Slide Number 10, how did we conduct the survey? Was this by email or something in writing? Because it seemed to me 39 only participated, and as Councilmember Anthony mentioned, some of the 39 participants were already captured audience with the PBIT. I mean, because they have their meetings, and you guys could talk to them. So, I'm kind of surprised that we didn't have more participants, and so, how did we ask for the survey?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So, we did the survey both online and in person. Online, I believe we had it through the project website, and then in person, we relied on the downtown ambassadors to help us hand out these surveys in paper form. The PBIT and some of the business members receive surveys fairly frequently, so at times, there could be a little bit of survey fatigue, so we try to space out whenever surveys go out to them. And so, there might have been some overlap between surveys to account for the number of responses, but we did have them available in person and online.
And in your opinion, do you think 39 really represent enough of what we have in the downtown area? I mean, is that sufficient enough for us to look at them and say, like, how many businesses do we have in the downtown area? Any idea?
I don't have the exact number. I'm sure that we have more than 39 storefronts. We did conduct similar surveys before the project, and we got similar response rates. So, I think this is, you know, about normal for, of a sample size for the population of businesses that we have there.
And then, my other concern is, of course, I'd like to see, I would have liked to see those numbers were higher than like the 61%, 62%, 64%. It seemed like they're, you know, not 100%. I mean, 73 support making changes permanent, that's a good number. I mean, I would have liked to see the numbers higher than this, to make sure that people really understand, especially our businesses in the downtown area, fully understand what we're going to be doing and how is it going to impact their business. Of course, having visitors coming into the downtown area, again, like Councilmember Anthony mentioned, those people that live in the downtown area or near the downtown, I can understand why this would be attractive to them, because everything is walkable and it's a lot more safe. But how many people actually, other than the downtown area, were in favor of the changes? Because we do want to bring more people here into our downtown area to help our businesses, of course. So, I wanted to really get an idea of who are these people we're serving? And then, also, are some of these folks from other cities? Are they visiting the downtown area? It would be nice just to have that recap of who are we talking about, and who's satisfied with this, changes that we're making. Those were my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Odi.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. My questions and comments are kind of similar. I think the numbers are strong numbers, but I think the sampling might be a little low, and not knowing how many businesses are there, it's hard to say if 39 is a good number or To Councilmember Anthony's point, back in the day, that used to be the Golden Mall, where it was all pedestrian, and there was no cars, and they opened it up, the businesses opened it, wanted it open to get more traffic. Times change, right? And it'd be interesting to see what they say about that. I'd be curious to see what they say about that. And the fact that you could have events there with the street closed, and have the vents there, and have the water, you know, back in the day, they had waterfalls and things like that, I think it looks better than barricades. So, I am curious about that, going back in time. I was there Monday for 45 minutes, because I just wanted to walk it and take it all in. And, you know, we did this for safety, right? But as long as you have a car that'll park right in the middle of San Fernando with his hazards on, and go into Starbucks and pick something up, and the cars are going around it, and then in the same period, within like five minutes, a delivery truck stopped right in the middle of San Fernando, and cars are going around it, that's a very short street. So, it's easy for people to say, you know what? I don't need to wait for the light. I can just jog across in 10, 15 steps and be there. So, as long as we don't have the downtown enforcement to really go out, and it's easy, right? Because it's the Starbucks, and it's the coffee bean that are the high-trap, people want to get in those places, so they think, you know what? I can just park right here for five seconds and go in. But within that five seconds, you have a whole unsafe situation happening, so...
And DoorDash is very popular with Shake Shack.
Yeah.
DoorDash Uber Eats, that corner.
So, I think if we targeted enforcement on some of the more popular areas, Shake Shack, and we're going to get what we want. When I see, when I saw the numbers, you know, near-misses, I'm not surprised, because again, it's, you can get across that street pretty quick, and people aren't going to wait for the light, and I get that. So, take all that in consideration. I really would like to know what the numbers are about closing it off completely. You know, I don't know if that would be like crazy or not, but I certainly could see it a point of gathering for events and a destination, so it's worth considering. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that feedback, Councilmember Odi. And to that point about getting more feedback from business and merchants, if the city council wishes to approve tonight's recommendation, staff would continue engaging with those merchants. We could look at ways to expand our survey outreach to get more responses and get their thoughts on, you know, anything from what amenities they would like to see in a phase two, what are their priorities to full street closure and other options.
Yeah, I think that's the most important thing. It's the merchants that bring the people. So we want them to be happy, and we want to work with them and feel like they're part of the process. So that'd be great.
Madam Vice Mayor, David Krisky, Assistant Community Development Director. With regards to the enforcement, the one thing to also note is with the paid parking that the council approved and we started in March, we have a lot more enforcement specifically to downtown. And so that additional enforcement has only been in play in the last like month of the pilot. So what's not reflected in our earlier observations was good enforcement of some of the things. So as we're getting our foot, or as we're getting a little more stable with how this enforcement is working for the paid parking, we are going to be branching out into those other, particularly the red curb violations and some of the safety-related. And so we'll have the opportunity to ramp that up as well. So I think we'll see it improving with the paid parking resources that are directly tied to that.
Great. Thank you. Great questions. And so in addition to the questions already asked, has, do we have data for the near misses or any collisions or information about the mid-block crosswalks? Not just the Palm and the Magnolia, but mid-block as well?
Yes, thank you for that question, Vice Mayor. We do have data before and after the project for mid-block crosswalk. Before the project, the three, yield compliance at the three mid-block crosswalks averaged about 50%, which is why this was such an important focus of the project, to see how the project changed and affected the safety of those locations. After the project, yield compliance increased to above 80% at all three locations. We don't have any reported collisions during the pilot phase that involved the crosswalks. And we looked at collisions before the project too, and they didn't involve the crosswalks as well.
Great, thank you. That's good news. And then following up on the questions about the surveys, I also have a question about the survey for the community, the pop-ups, the two pop-ups. So am I reading this right? You had two pop-ups and you received 37 responders during the whole two pop-ups?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Yeah, I echo the sentiments of the other council members that that's not, you know, really a lot of respondents. So the data, although it's promising, is kind of hard to read because, again, we don't know where they're from, we don't know the makeup of it, it's self-selecting, it's not a big group of people. So I think that, is it possible to get continued feedback from the community and increase those numbers? And maybe also extrapolate the data a little bit? So we're seeing not just strongly like or strongly feel safer, but also, you know, generally feel safer. So we can kind of see more of the data and information as well?
Yes, I think that there are opportunities to refine the survey and also expand the effort to get more respondents. I will caution that there are some times where, for example, I was, I hosted those two pop-ups, so I can, I have firsthand experience out of those 100 interactions. Not everyone is willing to participate in the surveys. But I think if we keep the surveys online for a longer period of time, maybe we find new ways of engaging and promoting it. We might be able to get more responses and then from there, breaking down with more granularity.
Great, wonderful. And since you are the ones manning the pop-ups, I have another question for you. For those 63 people who did not respond, did they give you a reason, other than I just don't want to do a survey? Were they maybe not from Burbank, so they're like, well, we're not really interested because we're not from here? Or did they give you any other reasons besides just, I don't want to do a survey? That might help us understand maybe more about it?
Not always related to why they didn't want to participate in the survey. Some people were, especially at the cultural market, for example, it's really busy, people are dashing in and out. But they were still willing to provide some thoughts and feedback on the project, which we did take into account.
Okay, great. Yeah, because the 78% living downtown or in Burbank is surprising that that's that many people, that high percentage. My experience in the downtown, when I have talked to people there, it's a much higher out of, folks from out of town coming to visit. That's a really high number.
Vice Mayor, if I could, we had sort of a change in our agenda packets this weekend, and I just now found the graphs for what we're talking about. And it's actually in the report on attachment 5.5. And it's exactly what you said, live in downtown Burbank is 28%, live somewhere else in Burbank is 50%.
There you go.
So, yes, because I was thinking about it, I'm like, there's got to be a breakdown somewhere in here. I've been having a hard time with this packet this week.
Thank you. And that's my miss for not seeing it and going that deep into the packet. So thank you for pointing that out. Okay, so that information is there. I'll take a look after the meeting. Thank you. And then my last question before a couple of comments is, in the staff report, you mentioned that the city received an award for the safety or intelligent transportation systems project. What is that award and what is the criteria? Who gives that award and what's the criteria for receiving that award?
Yes, so the city received the award in March of this year from the League of California Cities, which is an association of just that cities in California. They, the award was specifically for public works and capital improvement type of projects. And this category was specifically for safety or intelligent transportation systems. So projects that had been implemented and proven to reduce things like collision, improve pedestrian safety, and improved overall walkability. So there was some broad criteria that the project checked all the boxes.
Wonderful. Well, that's excellent news. We have a web page for this project, right?
Yes, yes, we do.
I think it'd be amazing to put something on there that we won that award, if we could. Be great.
Well.
All right, so it's a couple of comments about some of the things that were already mentioned, but just a little bit more. So the, talking about closing down the street, which is a lot of conversation around closing down the street and how to do it. Is it, I think we talked about earlier about the putting in something that could quickly be coming, going in and out, quickly being installed and quickly being removed. In Santa Barbara on State Street, they have this, it's the other way around, whether street is closed fully, and then they can easily remove the blockers for when emergencies come in. And they have it screwed into the pavement with like a circle, and then they put it in or take it out. So I'm wondering if, even though I know there's a lot that goes into phase two, if it's at all possible, at least temporarily, to put in those quick install bollards or whatever you call them to make them easily to close off the street? So at least for, you know, in the near future, we could close down easily?
You know, in downtown LA, they have the ones where you push the button and it's a hydraulic.
Yeah, those are a little bit more involved to get them installed. Yeah, for the ones in Santa Barbara, they're like a metal, a metal thing that I think has a little bit of concrete that you have to remove. But would that be possible to do without having to go through the entire phase two in order to install them?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So the short answer, I think it's technically no, we don't have to wait for the full phase two design to start looking at that, if that is a council priority. However, we, it would require a little bit more analysis for us to be able to provide you with a concrete answer on what is the most appropriate type of baller. Is there such a baller that meets all of the city's priorities and safety needs? From what we understand, in order, for a bollard, in order to provide the level of safety that we are looking for, it does require a significant amount of civil work, which is why the city right now relies on the type of temporary bollards or barriers that we use, which I think.
Welcome, Mr. Burcom, who is not retired yet. So one more question before.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor, Council, just wanted to point out, this is something, and I was looking about it, at our Chief Assistant Public Works Director and City Engineer.
Do you mind introducing yourself for?
Public Works Director, Ken Berkman, sorry. Basically, there are three types of bollards, and understanding the situation at a city previous that I worked at, there are the vehicles and the barricades that you can use, then the ones that you were describing in Santa Barbara at the city, they're basically installed into the ground in a locking type of system. We even created a different type of pneumatic dolly so the guys can, but they are heavy, 110 pounds. And then the ones that are really nice are the ones that have to have a major trench and foundation, and there's a lot of engineering. You're looking at probably some utility work, but those are the ones that are, you know, people think of the stainless steel ones that just like just come up.
And those are, those will stop a city bus, those are like super.
Yeah, and then, of course, we have the Meridian barricades, which we can roll. So there's definitely different types. The latter would definitely be a major capital project for us to consider with the IOB and with council during the annual budget.
Okay.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that. Yeah, there's, I think that we all are kind of in that direction. It would be great to make an easy closure of the street, to have the ability to make that pedestrian-only, but also we don't want to completely install something, you know, just yet, obviously, because it's going to be costly. So if we can find that balance, it'd be great. And then specifically around, oh, and I'm also open to the idea of looking at full closure at some point, too, just exploring that. I think there's enough people in the community who are interested in that, and I think that, I think it would be cool, but there's also drawbacks, too, so it's good to look at. And then lastly, the intersection of Magnolia and San Fernando, disappointed about the scramble, kind of hoping that would turn out to be something we could do. It could be art and all that, but I understand. And seven-second LPI is great, that'll be safer. I'm not 100%, oh, and then right turn on red, no right turn on red's going to help, too. I'm not 100% convinced that's going to significantly decrease the near misses, but I'm willing to wait to see what the data looks like to make a determination. And to that point, after you make those changes of the seven-second LPI and then no right turn, would it be possible then to gather more data, more information about the safety that that's changed and what that impact has had? And then compare it to none, then that impact, so we can see maybe, or the three different danger, is that possible to get that data afterwards? And maybe even have a six-month, like maybe after six months or nine months, have a, just a memo in the Whammer about like what the data is, is that possible?
This is David, Assistant Community Development Director. We can definitely do that. We'll need to work at the staff level about how to do that assessment and come back to you. The near-miss data was an interesting tool that we used to get response to the council's question of how that's operating. It was a little, it had some trade, it's had some drawbacks about how it, the system was used to get the near miss. And we'd like to go back and evaluate if that was used, how useful that was, and whether we want to use that going forward or looking at something else. So we may not be able to, or we may decide not to give you such a granular response because we're still kind of seeing if this data is useful for what we want to do and to look at the safety. So if not that data, we can still fall back to our traditional, you know, just crash monitoring. We have observational ability in our TMC, looking at it more qualitatively. So we may come back to you with more of that rather than this near-miss analysis that we used. It's kind of a bleeding-edge thing that we tried to, in response to the council's queries, and it had some good things for it, but it had some drawbacks, too. So we're evaluating the tool just as much as we're evaluating the project.
Makes sense, totally. Yeah, I mean, the end goal is to see if it is actually effective in decreasing, you know, close proximity of pedestrians and cars, right? And if there's another way to do that, that's fine. And also perception of safety, too. So if there's a lot of near misses, folks who are crossing might have a perception that's not safe, even if they're not getting injured. So if there's a way, any way that we can determine that that LPI and the no right, no right turn on red is making a significant impact, that we don't need to go to a scramble, we don't need to go to a dedicated pedestrian crosswalk in order to achieve the safety goals we're trying to achieve. Okay, right. Did you have one more question? No? Okay, yes.
Just a final comment. I think it's really exciting looking forward to phase two because looking at the pictures and what staff's recommending that we will do in phase two, I think it's going to be exciting, more inviting, it's going to change the look of our downtown area. So I also want to focus on that. But as you heard from all of us, we need more participation from our business community to also have them involved in the look and feel of phase two. I think it's really important that they help the staff and help us also to find out what do they need. Do they need more trees? Are the trees going to cover maybe their signage? Is this something, you know, the type of trees we put in front of their signage? I really speak from experience as a previous business owner in the downtown. So there is, there's consequences of having beautification, and how is that going to impact all the businesses in that area? So I definitely want to see them involved and have an input to help us to get to the design that we, what we want our downtown to look like.
And if I can share two pieces of information that might help us, help us ease our mind a little bit on that area. We are going to present an update to the P-Bid Board September 4th, I believe, the first Thursday in September, about your decision tonight and what the next steps in the project are going to be. If the project were to move forward to a phase two, the P-Bid Board also presented the city with a letter of support for the grant award that I previously mentioned with Metro, and they would remain an involved partner throughout that process, too. So that will be another point of contact for us in addition to the, to more surveying and points of engagement.
Which is great. I think it's important to involve the P-Bid, but I'm just wondering with the line of communications, what's really going on between the owners and the businesses who rent in that area? Because one of your charts here literally shows zero for business owner participation. And so it is, it's a concern that we are talking to P-Bid, as we should be, but I think it's also important to knock on some doors and say, you know, we noticed you did not participate in the past, and this is under, what is your connection to the downtown area? And I have, I run a business in the downtown, in downtown Burbank, and it shows zero.
That's page 127, I think that's the community outreach.
They attach five of six. So, you know, I know they do a good job to work with their tenants, but I don't know that they have enough time to also talk to them about all the changes. We may need to do an outreach ourselves to the downtown area. Thank you. I mean, the last thing I want is for them to have all these changes happen, and then, like, we didn't know anything about it. Nobody told us.
So it sounds like we'll get council direction to directly talk to tenants, we'll work about, figure out how to go straight to, you know, straight to the managers and straight to the business owners. We've done that with other things with the paid parking. We did, actually, it was pretty successful, so we'll ramp that up. We won't rely on the P-Bid.
Absolutely. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, that's great. All right, any other comments?
Just last thought, I have this vision in the future that once a month, like last weekend of the month, we close down the street for the vendors, and then maybe during the summer, we have a whole month, what we call it, you know, summer downtown, and it's closed off, and we sort of test what we can do and what kind of, you know, vendors and maybe kiosks and other stuff that we can fit down there. And at that point, if it becomes a recurring thing, we can even do surveys on that and say, hey, do you like when the businesses come down? How do you feel about this change? Better or worse, that kind of thing? So, yeah.
Yeah, and we could even start with just one block at a time, even do the whole stretch, just do that one first block and that's it, to start, you know, around the cultural market and the theater, for example. Yeah, that'd be kind of cool. All right.
Just to that end, we do, as a matter of course, our Econ Development folks, at the conclusion of all of our major downtown closure events, we do a survey to everyone that talks about, you know, how did this event help or hurt? What are your opinions? So we do that as a matter of course, and we can work with Econ Development to see, maybe we can tie in some additional ancillary things about street closures in general now that, you know, if a phase two moves forward, we'll think about that.
Wonderful. Perfect, great, thank you. All right, if there's no more questions or comments, okay, then we are done with the study session. Thank you so much to staff for your presentation and answering our questions. And this item is on the consent calendar, so we will do the approval then. And I will call for a short recess until 6 o'clock, so let's do eight minutes. How's that sound? All right, see you in eight minutes.